All right, folks, it's that time again, so I'd like to call this meeting of the Dunn County Board of Supervisors to order. We will begin as always with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which is standing, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if the clerk will call the roll.
Supervisor Johnson, Supervisor Pat Breslin, Supervisor Hedlund, Supervisor Score, Supervisor Steen is excused. Supervisor Zons.
Hopefully he'll be joining us online.
Okay Supervisor Gary Bjork, Supervisor Willsey, Supervisor Quinn, Supervisor Rogers, Supervisor Whitzel, Supervisor Kneer, Supervisor Barrier, Supervisor Calabrese, Supervisor Peter, Supervisor Vogel, Supervisor Sean Breslin, Supervisor Vander Mullen, Supervisor Robinson, Supervisor Morehouse, Supervisor Hagan, Supervisor Thomas, Supervisor Prochnow, Supervisor Gilbert, Supervisor Larry Bjork, Supervisor Bauer, Supervisor Lino, Supervisor Hartung, and Chair McCullough.
Here. All right, on to approval of the minutes. Can I get Supervisor Morehouse moves? Supervisor Whittle seconds. Any speaking to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion Bennett passes, minutes are approved. Presentation of petitions, memorials, and other communications. I haven't got anything. All right, on to public comment. Do we have anyone here from the public who wishes to speak for up to three minutes? Please come on up and state your name and address.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Carol Breslin and I'm a Dunn County resident and 13607 County Road Q in New Haven. The reason for my public comment this evening is the packages that I've placed on your tables. Please feel free to open them and take a really close look at them, especially the labels on the fronts of the bags, which are all unique and appear to be geared toward gay men. They contain an assortment of eight different condoms, flavored, textured, colored, glow-in-the-dark, you get the picture. These packages were found in the men's restroom at an establishment that I dine at frequently. When I opened it, I was shocked and appalled. Do you, the Dunn County Supervisors, know where our money is spent? I'm bringing this to your attention tonight because I believe that you will begin working on next year's budget next month. I want you to be aware that as elected officials, these kinds of expenditures ultimately fall on your shoulders. Your electorate holds you accountable and it is your job to hold the county employees accountable. I'm pretty sure that I will be told that these packages were paid for by a grant or a subsidy outside of resident tax dollars. When I asked about the Dunn County Housing Study, I was told that Dunn County did not pay for the housing study. It was paid for by a grant from the Community Foundation and a Community Development Block Grant. Here's the thing, we all pay taxes, federal, state, income, property, et cetera. Those taxes are then funneled through these NGOs, in the case above, a minimum of two NGOs, and then gifted back to the county. It's all our tax money and every stop through another agency diminishes the value of our initial investment so that our county projects funded by these grants are worth a fraction of what we paid. Both our government and NGOs produce nothing of monetary value, which means that our tax dollars fund them. I am asking you all to please keep this in mind when you start to work on next year's budget. Now, back to the packages. I have written and sent Wisconsin Public Records requests in the past to county and local officials with less than great results. If I do get a response, it is often months after the information was requested. Many times, they're completely ignored. This is frustrating and looks bad. Tonight, I'm hand-delivering a Wisconsin Public Records request to Diane Morehouse, Chair of the Health and Human Services Board, with a copy to Nick Lang Corporation Council. If any of you would like to view this request, I will leave copies on the table near the stacks. I would also like to know when the Dunn County Health Department got into the business of promoting promiscuous sex, but that's a rhetorical question that I would like the Health and Human Services Board to consider. One other thing I'd like you to consider is this. With the variety of condoms enclosed in this bag, were they geared toward children? Thank you for your time and consideration.
Three minutes exact. Thank you. Anyone else?
There was a public comment submitted online.
All right, one from the clerk from online submission.
On Wednesday, July 26th, at 6:14 PM, the following communication was received. "Thank you for allowing your citizens to add public comment to the board meetings even if you're not able to attend. I am commenting regarding the enormous increase in licensing fees over the last few years. My husband Jeremiah Frederickson and I purchased Eat My Fish, the rainbow truck farm south of town in 2017. We had a bit of a shock as we jumped into business with all the licensing and regulations we were required to carry, but with serving a food product to the public, it is understandable. However, in the past two years, our licensing fees have increased dramatically. Our mobile retail alone has doubled. Our mobile retail alone doubled two years ago with Dunn County took over licensing from the state. Then this year, we were told we instead needed to trans- need a transient food license, which increased our fees another $85. Over the course of two years, that license alone is over 200% increased, $65 to $195. Our restaurant license also increased due to the, quote, restructuring of complexity of serving fish, end quote. That increase was 35% increase over two years, $640 in 2019, $535 in 2021, $620 in 2022, and 2023. These astronomical increases in just a short time make it hard for small businesses like us to continue to offer products to the community. I would like to request the Dunn County review the fee structure to at least lower the costs for farmers selling their prepackaged foods to make it more affordable for the farmers and therefore more accessible to the community. Thank you and eat my fish." Jeremiah Jordan and the Farm Crew, Jeremiah Bullfogs Fish Farm, Eat My Fish, Menominee, Wisconsin.
All right, um, next up, appointments, we have none this evening. Normally, we'd then go to eight, report to County Manager, but we've had a request to bump the Russian slough forward so that we can just get that cleared off and let our our outside person here get out of here. So, without objection, I'm going to move us very briefly to 11, oh, sorry, 12, no, 11C2. Resolution for an easement in the Russian Slough Park. Speaking of that, Tom Quinn, do you want to touch on that, or who's, who, Nick? Facilities? Sorry, Mike. My apologies. Oh, yeah. We need a motion on the floor first. So moved, and Supervisor Sean Breslin, second. Thank you for the reminder. All right, Supervisor Rogers.
I think if it's, uh, it pleases the committee or the Chair, I'd like to have 24/7 Bradley. I'm not going to say his last name, speak to the issue.
Without objection? Okay, come on up.
Hey, well, thank you for allowing us to appear before the board with this request. I'm Brad Schmidt Necht with 24/7 Telecom. I'm an engineer over there and we are requesting this to help with our broadband projects in the area. As you guys know, we're busy with broadband projects and many of the townships surrounding Menominee. And we are requesting permission to plow fiber optic cable into the park and then across the river to the other side to, excuse me, to service pretty much the north, northeast quadrant of Tannen Township. In a nutshell, that's our best option right now. And just looking for the approvals from this body to move forward. One note I will make is that we've been in contact with the DNR, of course, for any permitting issues and things like that. I talked with the local person yesterday and he told me that both ends are considered upland areas, so it would not require an actual wetland permit or any type of permit since we're boring under the river, so. But that being said, we will, of course, reach out to DNR and get their blessing to make sure everybody's good and we do things the right way, so. It's about a 900-foot bore. We'll be on the, excuse me, the east side, shooting toward the west. The idea is to be about 10 feet underneath the river bottom. And what we'll be doing is pulling a duck back and then pushing the fiber through to get to each end and go from there. So, we will be feeding it from kind of north to south, so that's how it'll kind of work, but other than that, that's kind of in a real quick nutshell. Be happy to take any questions from anyone?
Supervisor Rogers.
Can you touch just a minute on why it's so important to go under the river, how difficult it is to get to all these homes otherwise?
Sure. Well, in the initial design, we looked at options to go around up Highway 25 and get to the area that way. As we got further into it, we checked our options and one of them was across the county road, D Bridge there, and we reached out to the Highway Department. They, well, first of all, we could not bore the river in that area because it was rock and very deep and not going to happen. We do not do aerial cable because of, we don't have the equipment or the staff to do that and we're 100% buried for everything else that we do. So, after contacting Dustin F Highway Department, they prefer not to have us on the bridge. We prefer not to be there. So, it was kind of mutual to do that. We looked at another option to go up and around to the 170, I think, up there, but that was going to add about $150,000 of additional cost that we had not budgeted for. And we're actually running into over, we're over budget on a lot of this stuff because of the inflation increases and all that from the time it was estimated to the actual construction, so. Going through all those scenarios for the last several months, the option at the, to bore the river at this location is the best option we have right now.
Any further questions?
I'll also add real quick that the environmental impact to this is very minimal. We'll be plumbing, plowing in there, dig a small pit to get the drill going, set up. Once we get completed, we'll bury everything, restore it with whatever, you know, grasses or whatever it is that the county requests we use to do that, so.
All right, thank you. Any further speaking to the motion? Supervisor Larry Bjork.
I might be way off here, which wouldn't be the first time, but would this boring have any effect on what decisions might come forward by the Tannen Lake Association as far as how they might want to spend their money?
Not that I'm aware of. We're a private entity. We'll be doing our work in the rural right-of-ways of the township.
I mean, I thought one of their, one of their options was a dredging project, but that wouldn't be in the same area as this.
If it is, I have not heard.
Okay, that's all I need.
Anyone else? Any further speaking to the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Looks like you're good to go.
All right, well, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Okay, back to our regular order. Chris, reported County Manager.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I just wanted to start by just telling you that I am well aware that we've had packed agendas for several months and that you're here sort of ad nauseam in the evenings. We are working on a plan to sort of spread that out over, over next year, but we will have some lengthier meetings here as we go get through budget and all of those sorts of things, so. But I'm well aware of how long you're all sitting here because I'm sitting here that long as well. So, purchase orders over $40,000. You have those in front of you? Any questions about those? I just would note that the purchase orders to the Dunn County Snowmobile Association represent two years' worth of purchase orders, 2022 to 23 and 23 to 24. No questions? All right. Quick budget update, there's not much to report to at this point in time. The departments were responsible for turning in their department budgets on the 7th of July. Theada has been in full swing of compiling all of those together and in preparation for our board workshop at the end of the month. And I anticipate, and I'll say it again and I've said it in previous meetings, I anticipate that it's going to look a bit shocking on the front end because we asked people to come in with their cost to continue, not necessarily just a zero increase. I think if we don't quantify for our own purposes and others what it really costs to continue to do business, then we always operate under the assumption that we can continue to do it as we've been doing it. So, we'll do the hard work of helping through the process of prioritizing and making decisions, but I think that you need to be able to see on the front side what it costs to continue to do the work that we do. So, it will start looking a little shocking, I am sure. And outside of that, I think that's all I have before I move into the discussion about housing. Anyone have any questions before I do that? Okay, so by way of a little bit of history, every so many years, the Public Health Department, as well as accredited health institutions like Mayo, are required to do a community health needs assessment. And some years back, in 2019, actually, the Community Health Needs Assessment identified housing or concerns about housing as one of the priority needs of our community along with four other things. In response to that, there's a Housing Action Team, which is part of the Health Dunn Right Community Health Coalition. And they began to explore the issues of how we could address issues related to housing in Dunn County. One of the recommendations was the potential to do, or the recommendation to do a housing study. They did. Ultimately, there was money available from the Community Foundation, which I would just note in response to Mrs. Breslin's comments, is a privately funded entity. They receive donations and inheritances and all of those sorts of things from people in the community. They're not a government organization. And they, they provided $10,000 towards a housing study. The Health Dunn Right Action Team then worked with, began to explore with West Central Regional Planning, who we also make a statutory contribution towards their, towards their funding every year, began to work with Wisconsin, West Wisconsin Regional Planning Coalition, Commission, to explore the idea of a housing study. Then the Commission wrote a federal, which is administered through the state, but Community Development Block Grant to fund the rest of the study, so that is a governmental funding source. And so, the idea was that we really just wanted to get a handle on what housing looked like across the county. And I know that it's, I have to be honest to tell you, I'm a little shocked at the controversy around housing, just because we all need it. And because really, in my mind, it's not a huge leap to the fact that it's an issue across the board. So, at one point during the housing study, there were literally eight houses for sale in the city of Menominee. So, if I'm a business owner looking to relocate to this community or come to this community or expand in this community, and there's literally no place for people to live in my community, I'm not coming here. If I, and then, so that's sort of one end. There's a need from executive level housing to homeless housing in, across our community, and it's not unique to us. It's, it's pretty much the status across the country. But I, I caution, I guess, going into hearing the report on the housing study against sort of starting from any assumption that it starts in any direction. It really is a universal need right now. And so, if you have, I always say housing's sort of not an issue if you have a house, but it is definitely an issue if you, if you don't, if you don't have stable housing because you can't afford the rent or you can't afford to purchase. And we all could tell stories about property that we are aware of that has basically vastly multiplied in its value over the last several years. So, with that, we did contract with West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning. Susan Badkey was the principal investigator in that project. And she did a ton of work to compile, compile your 170-plus-page report that you can access online and which I encouraged you not to print unless you really just want to. And I would now invite her to come forward and speak to kind of a summary of that information.
Thank you, Chris, and thank you, Chair McCullough, and members of the board for allowing me to be here to speak with you tonight about the Dunn County Housing Needs Assessment. As Chris mentioned, my name is Susan Badkey. I am a planner with the West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission. Special thank you, I know there are some of the county staff that are here that I worked with on the project, as well as the Housing Action Committee, Housing Advisory Committee, I should say, for their assistance with the project, along with some of the funding partners, the Community Foundation of Dunn County and the Wisconsin Department of Administration that provided some grant funding. The Housing Needs Assessment provides a lot of in-depth information and data. For those of you that have looked at it, as Chris mentioned, 171 pages. While I'd encourage you all to review that when you have the time, over time, probably, I recognize it's a rather lengthy document and can be overwhelming to some. And so, with that, while I could go on for hours as well, those of you that know me, I could talk about all of the data, talk about housing needs, housing strategies, I'm going to keep it relatively short tonight and really hone in and focus on the highlights, which are, the key points are covered in a handout that should be at your place tonight along with a copy of the executive summary. So, that should do a good job at kind of summarizing the bulk of those 71, 171 pages, but for a deeper dive, certainly, check that out and take a look at all of the data. So, to begin, as Chris mentioned, it was a great lead-in to what I'm going to cover tonight. The focus of the Housing Needs Assessment for the county is really providing housing opportunities for everyone. So, all ages, all incomes, all family types, whether you're a single parent or you're, you know, have a spouse and you have three children at home. It's about providing housing for everyone. Our students, we have, Dunn County is unique. It's home to the University of Wisconsin Stoughth in Menominee. Certainly, there's some student housing needs, all workers, all retirees, we have an aging population. It's important that we take a look at that. Really, it's all of our neighbors, our friends, our family, everyone. That's what the Housing Needs Assessment is about. So, it's looking from the lowest of incomes to the highest of incomes, all family types, races, just providing housing for all. So, as part of the process, it took a very deep dive at quite a bit of data. Census data, we conducted a countywide housing survey. Hopefully, many of you participated in that survey. Conducted a series of interviews from a wide variety of folks, employers, realtors, lenders, housing advocacy groups, different housing officials, builders, developers, really just to get a good understanding of what is the housing situation in Dunn County, what's the process for getting housing development, what are some of the challenges or the hurdles, and what are the housing needs. So, that provided a lot of information. And then, we also held a housing forum, a countywide housing forum, also held a City of Menominee housing forum, a Village of Boyceville housing forum. We're invited, folks, anyone could attend, share information about, you know, does the data kind of tell the story of housing in the county? Are there things that are missing? What are, what challenges, what experiences are you facing? So, really tried to get a good picture of where we're at, what are our needs, and then work towards finding some strategies. So, for example, had a college professor email me after taking the housing survey, college professor, University of Wisconsin Stoughth here in Menominee, saying they, when they looked to relocate here to start at the university as a professor, they weren't able to find any housing downtown Menominee, near the university. They ended up being able to find a place eventually on the north side of the city, but it took them quite a while. And of course, their preferred location is close to their work, the university, they're part of that university community, housing advisory members, who have kids looking to move back. They maybe went to college, they want to come back to their, to Dunn County where they grew up. Can't find any housing available, that's available, and that meets their price point. Okay, so those are two things to consider. Had a retired town resident, Village of Boyceville, looking to relocate into the Village of Boyceville. They live in the town, want to downsize, sell their house to somebody else, couldn't find anything. So, there's a lot of different needs, a lot of different folks who are in different situations, but at the end of the day, struggling to find the housing type that they need, and folks from all different walks of life, young, old, I shouldn't say old, young, seniors, in between, workforce, so several different walks of life that we need to look at as it relates to housing. Second point that I'd like to make, this won't be a surprise to you if you've followed the news, but you know, the supply of housing, and this is nationwide, but statewide, countywide, so the supply of housing, new housing in Dunn County hasn't kept up with the demand. And what that means is new housing is needed to meet current and future demands. If we take a look at our vacancy rates and all of the information, all of the data, hard data, is in the report, but based on vacancy rates, the number of units available for rent or sale has been extremely low in the county. 2022 net new construction in the county has been very low. Single-family home starts, so new homes that have come on the market from building, according to the Wisconsin Home Builders Association, they post all of that information online. From 2009, or 2000 to 2009, there was close to 2,000, about 1,800 new home starts between that 10-year period. 2009, of course, the market was different. We had the 2008 recession, things changed, but from 2009 to 2019, countywide, the housing, single-family home starts per the Home Builders Association was 509. So, we haven't been keeping up. Since that 2008 recession, new home growth just has not kept up in the county. Residential construction has slowed significantly. It's not rebounded. It hasn't rebounded, and why hasn't that? There's over a wide variety of factors, but it's something, something we need to look at. Recent article just this week, I think, from the Wisconsin Home Realtors Association, "With Wisconsin's housing market struggling, the available inventory of homes would need to double just to get to a balanced market," and that's statewide. That's according to the Wisconsin Realtors Association. "As prime buying season approaches, prices continue to go up on the small inventory." That's, that cannot supply and demand, right? So, if there's not the supply, there is the demand, but the prices have increased significantly. So, that's talking about existing need, but then when we look out to the future, so, in our Housing Needs Assessment, we try to forecast, project out 20 years. Looking out to 2040, what is the need countywide based on population projections, based on household size, and that then gets us to the number of housing units we need to meet what that projected population growth is in the county. So, based on population and household projections out to 2040, it's projected that the county will need an additional about 2,400 to 2,600 housing units. That's a lot. And so, how do we get there? What do we do? Many of these will probably be owner units based on the current housing mix, but there's also an aging population and many of the households will be in that 55-plus age group. So, there is that downsizing, perhaps twin homes type of housing units as well. As I mentioned, you know, the inventory- As I mentioned, you know, the inventory, it's, it's low. Um, so the unbalanced housing market, meaning your supply is low, but your demand is high, has increased housing prices. Again, that's not a shock to any of us if we've been paying attention, uh, but it's making it very challenging for people who are looking to either rent or to buy a home. As Chris mentioned, it's not a problem if you have a house. If you own a house, you're in your house. But if you're looking to, and if you're looking to sell your house, it's great, right? Even the better. The prices are up. But for those that are looking to rent or to buy, it's very, it's, it's, it's a challenge. It's a challenge. And again, it's not just in Dunn County, but that's what we're focused on here. It's a statewide, it's a nationwide problem. Um, so it's really, it, it really is a, a, a challenge for any potential home buyer or renter. Um, you know, I did a quick search just the other day on Zillow, so to update our, our data from eight homes in the City of Menominee, just to see how many single-family homes were available for sale um as of, I guess that'd be fi- five days ago. Um, there were fifty-two results within Dunn County, okay? The lowest being a hundred and thirty-five thousand, that was for a two-bedroom, one-bath unit in Downing. The highest was well over a million. Um, that was outside the City of Menominee. But of those fifty-two houses that were available for sale on Zillow, um, there were thirteen that were under, listed under two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, thirteen that were two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty, and there were twenty-seven that were over three hundred and fifty thousand. So you know, if you're a entry-level teacher, if you're an entry-level police officer and you're looking to buy a home, you're, you're gonna, it's gonna be a struggle. If you're um, you know, on a single income, it's gonna be even harder. So um, it, it certainly is, is making it challenging. Of course, we have an aging baby boom generation, maybe looking to downsize. Um, but many of them are holding on to their houses when they maybe would sell because where are they going to go? That's the question that really remains. Millennials who are a large population looking to move into homes, they're maybe not able to afford those, the, the housing prices that we have. On the rental side of things, I also use Zillow as my data source to look at uh and do a rental search. They allow you to do that on, on Zillow, and there were thirty-eight results. Um, the, the lowest cost rental unit was five hundred and sixty-five dollars. That was a one-bedroom, one-bath in Ridgeland. Um, and there were eighteen um that were less than a thousand dollars a month. And uh, uh, there was a eighteen hundred dollar a month home in Menominee near campus that had seven bedrooms, two bathrooms. So most likely, a university student rental um is what it's, it's targeted at. But those prices are just, um, it's, it's a struggle for folks. Um, then we look at wages. So we talk about housing prices increase. How have wages done? Because if your wages are going up at the same rate, then we shouldn't have a problem, right? It should be equalized. Um, in twenty twenty-two, the top ten occupations by job count in Dunn County are reported to have had median annual wages of fifty thousand dollars or less. Now, on the one, one pager that's at your place, I believe that says average annual wages, and that's incorrect. It should be median. And there is a difference, of course, because median means fifty percent of the jobs above are gonna be higher than that, right? Fifty percent below. So, um, but we're, we're talking about, you know, fifty thousand dollars. Housing costs, this is a key point. Housing costs in the county are outpacing household incomes, okay? On your handout, you can see there, renter households, the median gross rent increased seventy-eight percent from two thousand to twenty twenty, according to the data. The median renter income only increased forty-eight percent. So again, rents are increasing at a much higher rate than renter incomes. On the owner side of things, the median home price increased a hundred and five percent from two thousand ten to twenty twenty, and that's in Dunn County. That's based on the Realtors Association median home sale data. Uh, the median owner income, however, only increased twenty-six percent during the same time period. So housing prices are increasing at a very fast rate. Incomes are not keeping up. So that even further, um, you know, makes it, it challenging for folks looking to uh rent or buy. Um, uh, housing availability, affordability, why, why do you folks care? Why did we do this? What is it? What does it mean at the end of the day? Why should you as county board officials care about housing prices? Well, housing availability and affordability, it's important to economic development and in attracting and retaining businesses amongst other, many other reasons. But counties compete with other counties, with other communities for economic development. And there's really a critical need to create the right environment uh to build more housing. It really should be part of the county's economic development strategy. Um, housing availability, so both what's out there, what's the inventory, as well as affordability costs um are important in attracting new businesses and retaining your existing businesses. As I mentioned in interviews, had several conversations with different um employers throughout the county. There's certainly a need. Um, there's a need for workers, and to get workers, you need a place for them to live. Um, there's an article from the National Association of Counties, NACO, a repre- rep- uh reputable organization that states, um, in this article, it states, quote, "Rising housing costs, insufficient new residential construction, and stagnant or slow-growing wages have led to the situation where teachers, police officers and nurses, as well as retail and restaurant workers, working in creative industries, and entry-level technology workers are forced to either commute long distances to find housing they can afford or double or triple up in shared housing to reduce housing costs." It goes on to state, "When the local workforce can't find housing they can afford, the entire community suffers." It has been well-established in the research that having access to affordable and stable housing in good neighborhoods is associated with positive health, education, and economic outcomes for individuals and families. But having a sufficient supply of housing affordable to households along all the income spectrum is also critical to supporting vibrant and sustainable local economies." So what does this mean for Dunn County? Uh, the Housing Needs Assessment, again, this hundred and seventy-one-page report that you have available online to start digging into and diving into, um, it does identify the priority housing needs for the county. What are those housing needs? They're summarized on that uh one-page handout. Additional rental units at all price points, additional owner units, both starter homes and larger homes, additional units designed to allow and encourage seniors to age in place, improved housing quality. So especially this came up, City of Menominee, down by the university, student rentals, other rentals, bringing that uh, bringing the quality and improving the quality of housing and expanding your variety of housing types. Maybe think outside the box. We need, as I mentioned, in twenty years, based on those population household projections, twenty-four hundred to twenty-six hundred housing units in the county, that's a lot of housing units. Get creative. Maybe there are other housing types that could be built here to accommodate some individuals. Um, there's a variety of tools, strategies that can be taken by the county, working with partners. This isn't all tasked on, on, on the county. Um, but utilize your partners to create the right environment to build more housing and address your needs. Um, the assessment includes a recommended, recommended action plan with a variety of next steps. It's now up to you folks and your partners uh to take those steps towards creating a housing-friendly uh environment in the county. So with that, I thank you for your time and happy to answer uh any questions. Now or in the future, when you read the document.
Uh Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Well, I'm pretty frustrated with your report. Basically because you haven't laid out anything to answer your question, how do we get there? What do we do to make housing affordable? Everybody in this room probably did not live where they live now. They weren't born where they live now. They weren't given a house when they got married. So they had to make whatever sacrifices and choices so that they would have their housing. So my question to you is, what is Dunn County supposed to do? Are we supposed to lower the property tax on uh houses in the countryside so that they would be more affordable to own because you don't have to write a big property check, property tax check? Do we change uh the zoning laws so we can have denser housing? I mean, is that what you're suggesting? Do we change uh, uh, our septic systems and, and our wells or can't we do that? Do, do, is the only answer for Dunn County is that we have the same kind of housing that we see in the Ukraine being shot at by the Russians? Where you just stack people up one right on top of the other. How do you, how, how do you, what can Dunn County do to to solve some of those problems? I mean, we can't, we can't write down the interest payments. I mean, is Dunn County supposed to take taxpayer money and go to Bremmer Bank and say, uh, for your new housing, we want to uh reduce that interest rate five percent? And because that money comes out of my pocket and every other taxpayer pocket. So there's a problem. Everybody knows it's a problem. I wish your support, your report would say what we should do to correct the problem. Thank you.
I, I will note, Larry, um, that the primary purpose of the housing study was to identify the needs to allow us to craft the tools that we can or cannot be, use. So that job is our job. That's not what we actually commissioned the study for. But um, I'm sure that as we go forward, you'll have numerous recommendations for, I don't know, regulatory structures. I d- I don't know what the answer is, but if you don't ask the right questions, you can never find the right answers. Well, among other things, it is creating a housing uh task force to discuss that over time. Uh, would you like to be involved in that, Larry? It's gonna be a good deal of work.
I'm not interested. I don't care how people get their houses. They have, they should work for it like I had to.
Uh Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'm not sure if this answer is in the report or not, but a lot of cities and villages have like your TIF districts to help like your economic development. Is there anything on the horizon from the state that might make a area more uh help from the, from the government and for putting in the uh, the water in a sewer and that kind of stuff for housing?
Yeah, ex- excellent question. Um, so I can't speak if there's anything on the horizon from the state level. There are tools, tax increment financing is an excellent economic development tool for those communities that can use it. Obviously, it's not a county tool, but it is a, a municipal tool, so cities and villages. And I think, I don't know town TID laws as, as uh, eh, that much. Um, but there is an affordable housing extension um allowance. So uh, prior to, if you're close to closing your TID out, you can extend it for a year for affordable housing. Um, and affordable meaning that it's affordable to your workforce, right? So it's um, it's maybe really looking thirty percent of, of income is typically the qualifier that you use um, of, of your, your, your population. Um, so certainly there are um tax increment financing. I know that, and I, I can't speak to all the act numbers, but there was a series of legislative acts that were released uh um, and signed a few weeks ago dealing with workforce housing. And so there is stuff at the state. I know for a while they talked about having a workforce tax increment district allowance because right now for residential, you're really limited um to the mixed-use uh tax increment district. So there's talk of a lot of things and there's some action from the state um as it relates to housing legislation. Hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you, Gary. Um, and I believe the TIF TID, uh, some of that was addressed in Act twelve. They're still working out the details, so I, I don't know what that looks like right now, but I know that that's, there's, but there have been some changes made very recently. Uh, a whole bunch of folks. Supervisor Patrick Breslin.
Uh, thank you very much, Chairman. Uh, since you're here, I just got one question. Uh, actually, it's a statement you made. You say, stated that Dunn County requires housing across the entire income spectrum. What exactly did you mean by that? What is that spectrum as you see it?
So that spectrum, I, I think my, my quote, it was a quote from that news article that said it requires uh, or that a community is better positioned if it has housing across the entire income spectrum. So as, as I think Chris mentioned, you know, the needs are, are great from your, um, you know, homeless individuals all the way up to your executive uh housing.
So you're saying that Dunn County should pay for homeless housing?
I'm, I'm not, I'm not making any um assertions that Dunn County should pay for. Uh, uh, that, that's a county decision. Um, I see it as a need. I have, it's a need. Um, so I'm identifying the needs in the assessment, but what the county funds is a, a county decision.
Thank you so much.
Supervisor Rogers.
Thank you. I'd just first like to state that I, I know you put a lot of hours of work into this, not to solve our problems, but to give us data to help us or to help give us the tools that are required for us to make the hard decisions. There are no easy decisions. We can't just wave a magic wand and have our problem solved. Um, these, it's very hard and it's not, it's not just from one vantage point. It's not just homeless that need housing. It's executive housing. It's the employees for three M. It's the, the people that are working at, at minimum wage jobs. So it's across the spectrum. Um, we all have opinions and we should put forth our opinions, whether it's zoning or, or how we go about it to, to make more opportunity. But just, just, I want to thank you for all the hard work you put in. You weren't, you weren't put in the to do the, to give us the answers. You were doing this study to give us tools.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Rogers. Supervisor Kinnear.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, I understand, is it Boyceville and Menominee and Dunn County work together?
Yep. So, so it was, um, the project involved the county study, City of Menominee Housing Study and Village of Boyceville.
Is it, does the data in the report include COFAK, Elk Mountain, the other municipalities?
It does. It's a countywide, so it's looking at Dunn County as a whole. So it would also include Menominee and Boyceville as well. But they chose to have a deeper dive study specific to their community.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Supervisor Hagan.
Hi, thank you. First, I want to comment that I love this report as a elder millennial that uh works a full-time factory job in a two-person, two-income household. Uh, looking at housing prizes, prices over the past like five, six years, this just confirms what I've been seeing with my own eyes that even with a two-person working household, it's un, like, I don't foresee myself buying a house like anytime close in the future. And this just shows it. So thank you so much. But I do have a question that um I don't know is pertinent. I don't know if you can answer it, or maybe um, the county manager can um, based on the cost of starter housing. Um, so I was just wondering, there's a lot about uh new construction and new starter homes being built. And I was just wondering because of inflation and how much things have uh changed um cost-wise over the past couple of years. Um, with resi- residential neighborhoods, let's say there's two identical properties, two starter homes being built at this roughly the same time, let's say a year apart. Uh, one gets built and is assessed at a price, the other one's getting built, but um inflation affects the cost of the construction and construction prices go up ten percent. That house gets built and done with that higher ten percent cost. So is that house then um sold at like exactly the same type of house, same layout, same floor, floor plan, same, all that stuff? Are they um assessed at the same property tax value? Or is the one ten percent higher because it potentially sold for ten percent more because construction costs ten percent more? Do you, like, I, I don't know how all that works. So if someone has an answer for that, I'm all ears.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Everybody looks at Supervisor Brock now.
Yes, please, if you can.
Thank you Supervisor Brock now. Oh, where do you want to start on that one?
Thank you, Supervisor Brock now. Where do you want to start on that one?
Uh they'd be assessed similarly as, you know, actually a year newer would be worth a little bit more, but market value might be a lot higher. I've seen them where they're built basically a year apart and they've sold for eighty thousand to ninety thousand dollars more. Same house, just a year difference.
Yeah, so I think that's something that we all should take into consideration when talking about starter homes and why not is that because I mean, from my perspective, that's kind of a yikes. So I can look at a house being built and think I could go and live in that neighborhood and save up my money, but by the time I get my money saved up, the price that I could you know, go up so much. So and then that brings me back to zero and brings everything back to zero. So thank you for the yeah.
Supervisor Calabrese.
I'd just like to thank you for this presentation and for the study. And this study would not be necessary if there was not uh a problem with housing. And the reason this study was conducted, as I understand, is so that the county can thrive, so that people can find places to live, so that they can work here, so that we can find new ways to raise revenue, so that we can provide the services that people need. There's not a dearth of hard work over the last twenty to thirty years. There is readily available information that shows how the productivity of American workers has raised exponentially while the wages stay stagnant. And you can go back twenty, thirty, forty years. So while my friend Supervisor Bjork was easily able to afford a house, it's not the same these days, and that's why these studies are conducted so that we can find a solution to it, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Calabrese. Any further questions? All right, seeing none? Oh. Sorry, Supervisor Lino, you're not um didn't come up on 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 so Supervisor Lino.
And two extra.
Oh.
What really caught my eye was that when conditions of deteriorating housing stop. Um I'm I'm assuming you're probably talking to seniors that entered a home. They are barely scraping by on fixed income and their their home needs new windows, needs installation.
Or whatever. Are are there some kind of programs to maybe help these senior citizens so that if and when that home does come on the market, that'll be a quality home, not a, you know, rambling mess?
Yeah, there are some programs. Um there is a region-wide community development block grant home repair program. Um and it's a CDBG Community Development Block Grant Program, so you have to be of a qualifying income to be eligible for that program, but for seniors that aren't fixed incomes, they very well may qualify for that program. That uh the regional program, it is um administered by the Chippewa County Housing Authority. They administer that on behalf of the the region.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Lino. Any further questions? All right, seeing none. Chris, thank you, Susan.
All right, so let me briefly address the what's next question. Um so um in direct answer to Supervisor Bjork's question about what are we supposed to do about it? Personally, I believe we provide the leadership to solve the problems. Um we and to Supervisor Breslin's, the only time that Dunn County has provided any money towards homelessness has been through community development block block grant that was COVID money that was passed through to stepping stones and West Central or West Cap. Um prior to that, the county's only outside entities funded um are West Central Regional Planning Commission, which is a um statutory responsibility. We do provide money to um the local Dunn County Housing um like Miami Blank, you know, housing authority. Um and um that allows them to match that money from a state and federal basis. We provide money to uh region or economic development. And we provide money to the libraries. Those are the only external organizations where have I got them all? There you go. Yep. Those are the only external organizations which receive funding from Dunn County directly. Um so I believe that there are pages of recommendations about where places we could start. We could start with educating people about how to navigate complex systems of um becoming a first-time homeowner homeowner. We could start with providing uh taking a deep dive and look at our zoning and our planning um resources and are there areas that make it more difficult? One of the questions for development, one of the questions I've heard asked multiple times is why are people building in New Richmond and Altoona and um even Elk Mound and uh but not in not in Dunn County. I appreciate Elk Mound is in Dunn County. Um remove last time I knew, but but so we can look at our zoning laws. We can um we can look at providing um some um leadership to pull a group of people together. And so one of the things that we've done in response to uh the housing study is uh the Planning Resources and Development Committee has appointed a housing work group, which will look at all the recommendations made by regional planning and say uh where do we start? Where who needs to be at the table to solve these problems? But bringing people together, up until now, housing hasn't been anyone's issue, hasn't been anyone's problem, and we can provide that leadership. I don't think it's a matter of us providing the direct funding for that. We're not going to solve these problems, but but we can do what I believe is one of the things that government can do well in 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 terms of providing a forum to bring people together to begin to craft solutions. So the regi- so the housing work group will hold its inaugural meeting next Thursday morning, the third of August um at eight from eight to ten here in this room. Um I'll try to remember. So it's um Supervisor Quinn, Supervisor Morehouse, um Bob Cook, who is with the town of I was gonna stick him in Menominee, um Red Cedar, uh Steve Yon from Momentum West, because Momentum West has done a lot of um work with regard to housing. Um Eric Atkinson, myself, Anne Wadarchek from Zoning, Rob McDoodle from um who's a community representative. I think that's the group. And anyone else who wants to show up and help, there's plenty of room to roll up your sleeves and pitch in and give us a hand, but um that's the start to start a look at those recommendations and see what what we might be able to provide some leadership to begin to make change with. And with that, I think I'm done.
Thank you, Chris. On to nine, reports of departments, uh Human Services. Paula, come on up.
Good evening. The twenty twenty-two Department of Human Services Annual Report. Tonight, I would have liked to spend a lot of time talking about the services that we provide. I'd like to talk about impact stories. I'd like to be able to share um what we do and how we do it and the why behind it. Chris has told me I can have ten minutes. So and I'm looking at the clock going, yeah, I need to follow rules, right? So I'm I'm not going to spend a lot of time on those stories. In the report, you're going to be able to see, you know, the front pages stories that I shared with um exciting work we're doing. There's a lot of data regarding programs. But if you really want to dig down deeper, please get ahold of me and let's set up an appointment and let's talk about that and um really understand the program that we have. I want to talk a little bit tonight about the finances, though. I believe it's really important that this board understands human service finances, because you're responsible for approving budgets and looking at that and and understanding where the money is going. It's how we do our work. We can't do our work without the finances, and so that's very vital for us. Um if you would, I got the slide, so. Where do we get a point, Dan? Here? There, there, that one. All right, good. So um when we look at twenty twenty-two, um there are seven sections in our unit. We have a support staff unit, and that covers like my salary, the deputy director, our front support staff that that answer the phones. It also um covers the finance departments. We have centralized financing, but cer- certain staff in that department are um assigned to human services, and so it it covers those types of services there. And when we look at the full budget of fifteen million dollars, eleven point eight two percent goes to those support staff services. They're also spread out across the departments, so um each unit has so many staff in it. They pay for those staff um individually are assigned a percentage to the budget to pay for them, and so that way we can capture grant money for that area, if that makes sense. So we're we're pulling in grant money for those staff, not just the ones that actually work in those programs. Um so that's a way for us to increase revenue. When you look at the behavioral health services, that is our children and adults with mental health issues or um in need of services or substance abuse services, and that's thirty-seven percent of our budget and five million um in total. Our Family and Children's Service Section is the unit that um receives child protection reports, works with families, um foster care, reunification for be keeping kids in the home. Um if there needs to be um assessments or supports for families, we help assist with that. It also um is assigned the youth justice cases, so that's kids that are age ten to seventeen that would in adult world have a crime that they committed, but in this world at that age, it's called youth justice. So we're working with them to um create safety and um work with them to be able to help turn that action around and for the community's safety as well. Um so that program um is twenty percent of our budget. And then we have the children's long-term support um budget, so that is children that if they didn't have the supports in their home, that they would be in institutions. They have to meet a level of care for that and need. And so that program does help things um provide um services. So we um pay for the caseworkers that work with that, because there's certain requirements we have. And then there's a whole bunch of services that happen um that aren't in the budget um that the state pays for. So let's say we need a child um becomes of age that that no longer can be lifted into a bathtub because they've grown too big for their parents to be able to lift them and they're not able to um walk into the bathtub themselves. Um we can get adaptive equipment, so they're able to do those kinds of things. So that's kind of what that program looks like, to be able to keep kids in their home. We also have economic support, which um provides the assessments and eligibility for um Badger Care, Food Share, Childcare Programming, Birth to Three, which provides programming for kids that have disabilities, so speech therapy, OTPT, teacher services for that population, and then our Aging and Disability Resource Center, which is called A D R C. So that's eighteen and older for people that have disabilities, um assistance with them, helping um provide information, helping apply for disability, and then our older persons, and that also includes our nutrition program, so our home-delivered meals and um meal centers. So when you look at all of those programs, a hundred percent um of those expenditures equalling fifteen million dollars um for the budget. Um and that's an unaudited amount, so I was told by finance that I had to say that because the auditors haven't come back with their final numbers yet, so that's that's what we believe it's going to be. So if you whoops, I flip to the next one, then we look at I went too far? Okay, I'll go back. Yep. It's touchy. Am I on revenue now? Okay, thank you. So revenue, you know, the exact same categories or programs that we're looking at, but this is the revenue that we brought in last year. And of course, when we budget, we budget an equal budget. Um but expenses happen, um revenues come in that maybe we didn't expect, new grants, um we may receive more in billing programs or insurances than we expect. And so um in twenty twenty-two, our department actually brought in an additional revenue of three hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. And so this um county um has a policy where that goes back to the general fund, so that would go back into twenty twenty-three operations or whatever this board decides to do with that. Um so it's important also, I believe, that you know that our human service budget um has many different ways we bring in revenue. So one of that is tax levy. Of course, we always bring that request here, right? And twenty-two point forty-four percent of our budget of our revenue in twenty twenty-two was tax levy. The rest of it was grants, state, county, um contracts, Medicaid billing and private insurance billing, and we at times um bill consumers. And so all of that makes up the hundred percent, but knowing that twenty-two point four four is the actual tax levy coming from Dunn County. And then, of course, I talked about the support services already. They're split up and and go across the um entire department. So at this point, I'd like to stop and ask if there's any questions on the financial part of my report. Nothing? You guys are good? Okay, I'm gonna move on then. So um we were told to focus on one program, and I chose to talk tonight about CSP or Community Support Program. Twenty twenty-three was designated as the Year of Mental Health and Well-being by our governor, and so I thought maybe that it would be important to talk about one of our mental health programs. CSP is a program that is certified by the state. Um we we are every year, uh the state comes in and looks at our programs, makes sure that we are in compliance with the program. We receive amount of a certain amount of funding. Um we're able to bill Medicaid for that amount of funding in the program. Um and the remaining amount then is tax levy that helps this program um um do what we need to do each day. The purpose of the program is to really keep people out of institutions. And so um it's it's a program for adults, and um when we look at institutions for adults um for mental dece- disease, it's about a thousand dollars a day. And so there's two good reasons to keep people out of institutions, right? When you're talking a thousand dollars a day, and sometimes it's a full year or longer, people can be in an institution. That's a lot of money to our to our budget, right? The other the other piece is if you can keep people close to home, have their natural supports, be close to family, um receive um their um support through the communities and services, that's a lot better for everybody, right? Um families that would have to drive to Winnebago um or Mendota um to to see a loved one, that's just really challenging on families and and the individual that's in there and um not being able to be in their own home. So this program really works hard to keep people out of institutions. And what it does to do that is it provides case management, some symptom management, so we really look at what's that severe and persistent mental health disorder? Uh medication management, monitoring, we contract for psychiatric services, crisis intervention services, counseling. We work with individuals that want to work or have worked, and then all of a sudden um a mental health episode happens, and they're maybe not no longer able to work or need support, so we work with them with that to be able to stay employed and individual and group social recreational activities. So things in the community, a lot of times when you have a mental illness, you feel isolated, you feel like nobody else is going through what you're going through, and to be able to have some contact with community um and natural supports is very important in the recovery process. And so that's what the program um does to be able to help consumers. One wonderful piece of news I wanted to share with you. In twenty twenty-two, we had an individual that um feels very strongly about the CSP program in Dunn County provide a donation of a hundred thousand dollars to this program. And they did that. We worked, actually, Chris started this process before I um started in the position and recommended that it went through the Community Foundation, and so we did that work. And any of the costs that we have um for consumers that that are not paid out of the actual program then are charged to the Community Foundation, and we received that money back. So we're able to do some really fun things, like we've supported a couple people to start their own business that they wouldn't have been able to do if they um didn't have some of this funding or, you know, um therapy services or um if they were looking at an eviction and helping them to pay a month's rent or something. So that was really a wonderful piece that we had. Um lastly, on this program, um just wanted to talk about some of the outcomes. We had thirty-eight clients in CSP in twenty twenty-two. Five new ones came into the program, nine were discharged for a variety of reasons. And when we look at recovery, um there's a lot of hard work that goes in recovery for individuals that are going through this um as part of their life and um and one thing I want to share is that sixty-eight percent of the CSP clients made at least fifty percent of their goals, and that's huge for this population to be able to do that. And so I think that's just wonderful news that we want to share, meeting those goals um is quite an accomplishment. I am going to skip through the budget. Um I think you received a copy of this, but this is the I think you received a copy of this, but this is the revenue that was brought in underneath this program. But for time, I'm going to skip through that and just go to questions if you have any. Are you gonna let me off easy? Wow.
It appears to be the case.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Paul. Okay, Environmental Services, you're gonna, the crowd?
All right, good evening, everyone. My name's Chase Cummings. I'm the County Conservationist here for Dunn County with the Land and Water Conservation Division, a division of the Environmental Services Department. As the facilitator of the Environmental Service Department for for 2023, I'll be giving the introduction to our 2022 annual report. From the entire Environmental Services Department staff, we would like to thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present our annual report and to highlight a few of the services we provide. So the Environmental Services Department is managed by a three-member self-directed team consisting of land and water conservation, managed by myself, planning and land use control managed by Ann Wadarchek, and surveying managed by Tom Carlson. Collectively, each division is responsible for planning, organizing, directing, and performing all work of the Environmental Services Department. On the screen, you should see our organization chart for our department, the three divisions, shared management. We have eight land and water conservation division staff, five planning and land use staff, and three surveying staff. This is the Oversight Committee, which consists of the Planning and Resource and Development Committee for 2022, and also consists of the Land Conservation Committee. So to speak specifically on our land and water conservation division, want to just point out the staff within that division. So that includes myself, Janelle Newcomb, Bob Kainer, Amanda Hanson, Heather Wood. In 2022, we had a position change from Steve Olson to Rick Ingley, Tina Barone and Travis Dryer. Collectively, we have over a hundred and fifty years of conservation experience in our division. On the screen, you should see a list of programs. These programs are to sustainably use, enhance and preserve the natural resources of Dunn County. These programs are areas we have a role or responsibilities in, and it's not all inclusive. I'm going to speak on one program in particular tonight, but would be glad to have a conversation about, excuse me, any of the programs at a later time. Our land and water conservation division budget is around two million dollars, depending on the year, with approximately seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from local tax levy. And the remainder is local program revenue or grant revenue. Much of the grant funds are passed through, so we leverage other grant funds, tax levy and staff time to bring more funds back into Dunn County. The program I like to highlight is the Farmer-led Watershed Program for this year's annual report, otherwise known as the Producer-led Watershed Program on a statewide basis. It's a statewide grant program to support farmer-led conservation efforts. We in the Land and Water Conservation Division work with our two producer-led groups in the county to apply for and manage this grant program. Dunn County supports this effort with approximately sixty-two percent of one position or approximately eight percent of our land and water conservation division time every year. The two groups are the Hay River Farmer-led Watershed Group and the Red Cedar Conservation Farmers. Particularly the Hay River Farmer-led Watershed Group was one of the first farmer-led watershed groups in the state and part of the original pilot program starting in around 2013. The reason for the Farmer-led Watershed Groups on a statewide basis is to allow for farmers to lead the efforts in conservation to address water quality concerns and other agronomic issues that they may be facing. On the screen, you should see the two separate groups, the dates that they started, approximate funding that has come through since the start time, as well as additional funding. So the the top number where we, for Hay River is around a hundred and seventeen thousand, and the Red Cedar Conservation Farmers is around a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Those are funds that come directly through the state Producer-led Watershed Grant Program. The other sources of funding mentioned up there are other grant sources. Some might be state and some might be private. Particularly the Hay River Farmer-led Watershed Group in its initial pilot program was part of four Farmer-led Watershed Groups in the western part of the state, the original four in the state, and they received a five hundred thousand dollar McKnight Foundation Grant and are still operating with some of those funds today. You can see some of the, the program goals for each group, number of members, and those fluctuate from year to year. But ultimately, the reason for the groups are to look at nutrient loading to our surface water and groundwater and to allow for farmers to try new practices to, with this grant program can lessen the risk that they might normally incur. Here's just a quick shot of the Hay River Farmer-led Watershed Council in an area of the map. It does extend into St. Croix, Polk and Russ County, or excuse me, Barron County. And but we manage all the grant funding that comes for this particular Farmer-led Watershed Group. There is obviously some social media presence through the Farmer-led Watershed Council. So I encourage you, if you're interested, there's typically events that happen throughout the year, both in the field and sometimes in the winter time to update on other activities that the groups are performing. The other Farmer-led Watershed Group on the eastern side of the county, the Red Cedar Conservation Farmers, this is a map of those watersheds that cover that group, and that also extends into Chippewa County as well. Some of the goals for that, for the the groups specifically, the Red Cedar Conservation Farmers, but also consistent with the other group is to reduce nutrient loads to the Red Cedar River, improve soil health, and also provide an outreach and education activities for the agricultural community, as well as the general public who are interested in in the topics. A few more statistics up on the screen as far as some of the accomplishments that the particular groups have made recently, looking at no-till acres, cover crops, planting green soil samples, establishing grass waterways to prevent erosion and other associated practices. This chart to the, the top graph shows the total phosphorus concentration or load within Lake Manoma near the Manoma Dam dating back to about nineteen ninety-five. And you can see that the trend is trending down in the phosphorus concentration. Phosphorus is a large component to algae, toxic algae blooms within the surface water. So seeing that trend go down is a positive, positive site. The chart below is the nitrate concentration at the same location, and we're seeing that go in the inverse direction. And nitrogen concerns in surface water is connect, directly connected to groundwater. And there is a certainly still a need to continue the work that we have for these Farmer-led Watershed Groups. They are a part of the solution to some of the the load reductions, but not the only solution. That is a complex system that we need to consider all, all perspectives and avenues. I was asked to also highlight real quick and touch on, last year, all of you approved one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in ARPA funding towards a private well monitoring program. And I'm happy to say that that was a success so far. We had over a thousand people show interest in that program, and we've collected a thousand samples in the last two and a half months. Many of you, maybe some of you have, were on that list and received a water collection from, from our office. We're in the process of getting results back from the lab and hoping to have those results starting to go out as we batch them back into the lab. So hopefully by October, we will have all the results provided, and then we can provide a general report to the, to the, to the full county. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Tom for our surveying division.
Thank you, Chase. Good evening, everyone. As Chase mentioned, I'm Tom Carlson. I'm the manager for the Surveyor's Office, the Survey Division of Environmental Services. I have two employees that work with me. They've both been there for a number of years. Greg Botzer is a professional land surveyor and Troy Stoll is a survey technician. I'll just highlight some of the major duties that my office carries out. We review and approve regulated land of it, land developments, which would include certified survey maps, state and county subdivision plaits and condominium plaits. We perform all surveys required by the county or by a court. We assist the highway department with their various projects, usually involving road right-of-ways, county highways. We file and index all survey records for the county that are submitted. We administer the county land division ordinance. We assist the general public and other county departments and other agencies with land surveying related questions. We provide copies of survey records upon demand. I should note that most of our records now are available online and are searchable from the comfort of your own home. So we don't see a lot of traffic anymore or not as much in the office. We also perform remonumentation and maintenance of the U.S. Public Land Survey System corners. So for the rest of my presentation, that is what I'm going to focus on. So I'm going to try and explain the Public Land Survey System on one slide, which I could speak for hours on. So I know I'm covering it at a very high level, but just bear with me. So the original Public Land Survey System corner markers were set in Dunn County from approximately eighteen forty-seven to eighteen fifty-three. There's roughly twenty-eight hundred of those scattered around the county. Nine different deputy surveyors and their crews completed the work. The corner markers were typically wood posts cut from local trees. So you can imagine what would happen to those wood posts that were set one hundred and sixty years ago. They're gone, most of them. So the markers were set at half-mile intervals around the perimeter of each one-mile square section of land. Over time, a variety of many types of monuments were set to replace those original wood posts. And I've got a lot of examples here. I found just about everything on this list and then some. So you never know what you're going to run into, and you're going to see some of that, some of the evidence that we found coming up here. So once the original survey was completed, the perpetuation and maintenance of that system became the responsibility of mainly county surveyors, but today, private surveyors are also assisting with that work. So I'll just touch real briefly on the program mandates and funding sources. So Chapter fifty-nine point seven four of Wisconsin statutes speaks to perpetuation of section corners. Currently, county surveyors are not mandated under statute to perform this work. The work that we do do is funded through the Dunn County Tax Levy, results in approximately one and a half full-time equivalent positions with an annual cost of approximately a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, fully funded through the county tax levy. There are no user fees or sources of revenue to offset those expenses. And I will note that the program does provide a substantial cost savings to any landowners that are having work done. So why is it so important that this system be protected and maintained? Well, number one, it's Wisconsin's very first, one of Wisconsin's very first infrastructures that's still being used today. Most land descriptions in the state are referenced to the system. The system serves as a framework for property ownership, foundation for all parcel mapping projects. Having a properly maintained system reduces the risk of property disputes and equitable taxation and disagreements about resource rights. It also avoids confusion over ownership and easement locations, and it prevents unnecessary expenditures by private citizens and local governments. So now I'm going to talk about some historical, or show you some, some of the evidence we've uncovered over the years, which very proud of, proud of this. So before we can go out in the field and start looking for evidence, we have to do research. And I think a lot of surveyors overlook that, right? So this is an example of some of the research we do. On the screen here is a copy of county surveyor D W Waite's Field Notes from nineteen oh three, and I've highlighted some things in yellow. He indicated he placed four bricks at five different section corners in the town of Spring Brook. So that was nineteen oh three. If you look at the bottom here in nineteen ten, a different county surveyor, seven years later, E.T. Thompson found four brick buried about one foot below the surface of the ground at all four section corners of Section twenty-three, Town twenty-seven north, range eleven west, which is Spring Brook. So our goal was to search for these bricks at the northeast corner of Section twenty-three. So we computed a search location, which was basically at the centerline intersection of these roads. It's at the intersection of what is now County Highway E and nine hundred and seventieth street. So a position was, was determined where it should be, and the excavation began. So this is the result of that excavation. You can see here a few feet below the road surface appears to be some red bricks, right? So we're very excited, but the work wasn't done. We need to start removing those bricks. So when the, the top brick was removed, it revealed another brick below on end. So we just kept digging, and there was a vertical column of bricks extending down into native soil. So hopefully you can see this on the screen. So as you can see, only one of the four bricks was found intact. There were four total, but there were a lot of pieces of the other three. So after new, new paving was put in, we came back and said, uh, meant to bring one along tonight, but I forgot it. But it's about a three-inch-long magnetic survey nail that we've driven the pavement directly above where the bricks were found. So anybody surveying in the future has a point to measure from, because obviously we're not putting those bricks back in the hole. So that was a very neat corner. This is another nice corner. It was in the town of Otter Creek. If you can see on the screen, there's a flat stone laying on the ground, and it's got some scribing on it. I'm going to zoom in the next picture, and you can see it's got a S fourteen for the section number fourteen, Town thirty north, range twelve west, west was corresponds to the town of Otter Creek. So the stone was slid over, and this aluminum monument was put in its place. So another neat corner. Now, this one was also in Otter Creek. We got to this position, we find this odd, or we find this shaft, we started digging down and find out it has a flange on it, really odd-looking flange. Never saw anything like it before. So we start digging down even further, and it ended up it was a crankshaft from a four-cylinder engine. And you have to remember, these surveyors years ago didn't have a steel supplier that they just went and picked up a bunch of rebar. They had a horse and bug, and they used whatever they had on hand, that list that I had mentioned before. But this is the first time I've ever found a crankshaft. It was a really nice monument, right? It had a nice shaft on top. It had all, you know, the journals on the shaft prevented it from heaving and, you know, with frosts, freeze-frost cycles, and it had been in the ground a long time. So that was a very neat find. This is another, this is probably the most substantial monument we've ever found. It was referred to in survey notes as a locomotive axle. It is way off the road. It's in real near the village of Rock Falls. And how somebody got it hauled that far off the road, I, I still don't know. But they stood it vertical, it was tipped and leaning, so we had to, had to plumb it up. But we always hear of people tampering with survey markers, removing them, moving them. I don't think anybody would dare move this monument. It weighs several hundred pounds. It would be a chore, chore to relocate it or tamper with it. This was another very interesting corner. In the foreground, hopefully you can see there's an iron pipe with some pink flagging on. Private surveyor had set that at this very well-established fence corner. Obviously didn't do the research because in nineteen thirty-seven, county surveyor William A. Harding noted that he set a cement block and a bunch of red brick at the corner. So we get out there with our shovels and start digging around the fence corner and had the surveyor that put the pipe in, put it on the other side of the corner post. He would have hit the brick and, and the cement block. So hopefully you can see that in the picture here. I've got another close-up here, but that was everything that was removed, a very nice-shaped cement block with a whole bunch of broken red brick. So, you know, we have a lot of fancy surveying equipment that costs a lot of money, GPS equipment. We have our pickup truck, we have lasers and, and all this equipment, right? But I can't help but think some of the cheapest equipment we have is our shovel, and that's the most important piece of equipment we have in our truck is a shovel. You can't do a thorough job of looking for evidence without a shovel, boots on the ground. This was another nice corner. It was a scribe stone that was set in eighteen eighty to replace the original wood stake that had been put in the ground in eighteen forty-nine. It was all full of moss. We peeled the moss off the top. You can see a nice chiseled X on the top, and it was at a quarter corner, so they scribed one slash four S for quarter section. This was another corner, Town of Sherman. So as part of their duties, the original government surveyors were instructed to blaze and scribe trees. They referred to those as bearing trees to serve as a witness to the actual corner location in case the monument was ever destroyed or disturbed. So this tree in the, in the background here is a sugar maple, which was blazed in reference in those original field notes from eighteen forty-nine. So these are the notes. I'm not going to go through all them, but basically what I have highlighted there is one of their bearing trees that says sugar ten inch, so they noted the diameter of the tree. The direction was north thirty-one and a half degrees west, thirty-one links, so which equates to about twenty and a half feet. And then here is the tree with me standing by, just to give you some perspective. It was marked in eighteen forty-nine, it's now fifty-two inches in diameter. These trees are getting harder and harder to find, right? Because you think of disease and wildfire and logging and farming, lightning storms, tornadoes, everything that can happen to a tree, cutting them down for firewood. This tree is still alive remarkably. It's not in the greatest health, but it is there, it's alive. It's not thriving, but it is surviving, and, and it's. It's not thriving, but it is surviving and and it's, it was a very neat corner, so. Um, this was another corner up on the Dunn Baron County line. Can see in the foreground, there's a plow share, a one bottom plow with some broken red brick and the surveyor that set that also uh blazed this white oak tree in the distance. This was a well point that we had found on the town attainer. For those of you that have heard, maybe seen or heard of sand points, they were pretty common years ago. Supervisor Rogers, I'm sure is familiar with sand points. Um, but this was set as a as a survey marker and we had found it, so. Uh, this here, um. So I'm going to finish my presentation with a unique corner. We dealt with an O'Gally. We find this old rusty iron pipe on the shoulder of the highway, right? Shoulder of a town road, looks something, looks like something very official. Problem was, well, several surveyors had used it. Problem was it didn't really fit the other section corners. It wasn't in the road and it just seems suspicious. And it's a classic case of if something doesn't look great, trust your gut, you need to further investigate. So um, that's what we did. And we found out after investigating that this pipe was never meant to be a survey marker. But rather, it was a broken off mailbox post that someone had cemented into an old milk can, right? It was on the shoulder of the road. That's where mailboxes are. Um, and it's a prime example of doing further research and getting the shovels out and finding out what's going on. So we ended up adopting a different position for this corner. It was just unfortunate that some survey work had been done from that pipe. So that concludes my presentation, but just one, one thing I want to highlight from twenty twenty two, an accomplishment. We did a complete rewrite of the county land division ordinance. A lot of that work happened in twenty twenty one with official adoption being in January of twenty twenty two. Since that time, we've done some amending to that ordinance. PRD has worked on that. It's been through a first reading during the month of June and tonight it'll be on your agenda coming up for a second reading. So that was one of our our major accomplishments in twenty twenty two. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Anne.
So at some point in my career, I kind of thought maybe I didn't want to do planning and land use. And I went to one surveying class and I'm kind of regretting that right now because that looks really fun. Um, I don't have any pictures because no one wants to see me crying at my desk, but um. All right, so I'm Anne Wadarchek. I am the zoning administrator for both the Planning and Land Use Control Divisions. Our staff in twenty twenty two, um, we had Janet Riedel still. She's retired since. Um, we have Jackie Dryer, who works with us on a seasonal during the summer. Michelle is our sanitary systems um expert. She's been with the county for eight years now. And Tracy Albrightson joined us last in that year as well. Where is this thing point? All right, so um, the Planning and Land Use Control Divisions provide assistance in the development interpretation and maintenance of compatible land uses and consistent land use controls. Um, we're responsible for the formulation formulation of plans, ordinances and programs that ensure the long term well being of our community. Um, we have a working relationship with the Planning Resources and Development Committee. Um, we work with the committee to provide um our expertise, insights and recommendations on various land use issues, zoning regulations and development proposals. Um, we try to maintain regular communication and coordination with their committee. Um, so that we can align our work with the county's overall development goals. Um, we also work with the Board of Adjustment. Um, the zoning board of adjustment serves as a quasi judicial body. They're independent of the Planning and Land Use Control Divisions. Um, their primary function is to review and decide on appeals, requests for variances, exceptions and exceptions to the zoning code of ordinances. Um, so we provide technical information, documentation and analysis to these zoning cases that come before the board. Um, both the Planning and Land Use Control Divisions in Dunn County operate under the authority of the Wisconsin State Statutes. Uh, the Planning Division is under chapter sixty six and two thirty six. And the Land Use Control Division operates under chapter fifty nine. Uh, both of these divisions provide services that are necessary to comply with the state's requirements and fulfill the county's responsibility for land use management. Our funding generally comes from three different sources. Um, county budget allocation, um, grant funding and permit and application fees. Um, at the moment, um, we haven't really done a whole lot of grant funding or pursuing grants. Um, but that's something that we'd like to be looking into as we move forward next year. Um, we provide services to stakeholders in Dunn County. We assist individual property owners with land use questions and development proposals. We collaborate with local businesses to ensure zoning compliance. And we provide public participation support to the towns, villages and cities. And then I've listed some of these things here, but there's so much it wouldn't possibly fit on here. Um, so I'd like to focus on the zoning part of our responsibilities in these divisions. Um, zoning permits, um, the comprehensive plan, the zoning map and the code of ordinances are all the tools that we use in our division. Um, they allow us to regulate development, align projects with the community's vision. And they provide guidance to property owners and developments. Um, so for those who live normal, happy lives and don't think about zoning all day. Um, zoning can be simplified as the law that determines how land or property can be used. Uh, zoning regulates the activities, uses, densities and size of buildings that can be built with the intention to promote orderly patterns of development. Um, I've summarized my graph from my report here just to show the number of permits. Um, in twenty twenty two, we issued four hundred and forty nine permits. Um, the majority of those being with general zoning and sanitary permits. Um, you can see those in pink and blue on the graph. But this graph really doesn't reflect the extensive staff time dedicated to assisting people to get these permits. Um, we do site visits, inspections, application meetings, public hearings and all of this together kind of is how we, you know, have our critical role, critical role in land use regulation. Um, we also use the comprehensive plan. Um, this outlines the vision, goals and growth policies of the community. Um, our zoning regulations need to align with the comprehensive plan. Directing development to specific areas while preserving others such as agricultural zones. Um, we also use the county zoning map. Uh, the county zoning map serves as a tool for zoning by visually representing the spatial distribution of zoning across the county. It provides a clear and accessible reference to identify different zones and their land use designations. Um, this enables property owners, developers and local officials to understand the permitted uses and be able to refer the, refer to them easily. My slide just is off here, but. This isn't the right one. All right, so the code of ordinances is another tool that we use in zoning. Um, it contains regulations and laws that govern land use within the county. Um, these ordinances provide guidelines and standards for various aspects of development. Um, including classifications, permitted uses, building heights, setbacks, parking requirements and more. Together, these tools work in tandem. Um, the comprehensive plan sets the broad division, broad vision and goals for our future development. The zoning code of ordinances translates the plan into specific regulations and standards. The zoning maps visually depict the zoning districts to ensure consistent implementation of the regulations. And the permits serve as a practical means to apply and enforce these regulations on individual development proj- projects. So by integrating these elements, local governments can promote orderly development, promote, protect community character and balance the needs of various stakeholders within the jurisdiction. That is the end of my very exciting reports.
Thank you, Anne. Any questions for Anne or Chase or Tom? Supervisor Hagan.
I have a comment for Anne. Um, with our housing survey going forward, I think you're going to be invaluable. Um, your expertise um to going forward with the county. So I'm looking forward to hear what you have to say in the oncoming months and years. So thank you for your work.
Anyone else? It looks like you're off the hook. Thank you so much. And on to uh, item ten, consideration reports, resolutions and ordinances to the county board from the executive committee. Ten A, resolution twenty twenty three, budget adjustment for human services, health department facilities and E and S. You've all seen a ton of these. Grant money comes in, we have to authorize it to be spent, et cetera. It's the, it's the periodic large adjustment. Can I get a motion for this? Uh, Supervisor Quinn moves Supervisor Morehouse seconds. Uh, any questions or speaking to the motion? Seeing none? All in favor? Do you want to do this one as a roll call? Oh, we have to roll call. My apologies.
All right, uh, voting is open on your screen. Uh, I will ask Supervisor Zons for your voice vote.
However, having studied tonight's agenda, you can record my vote as yes on all budget items, ordinances and resolutions. Not sure if a vote by Zoom chat is accessible, but here we are.
Let's see if we need it first. I I don't see. Only waiting for. That's the only one we need. We've got twenty six.
Okay, we've got twenty six. We're.
All right, the motion passes. Ten B, ordinance meeting chapter seven of the Code of Ordinances and creating fiscal policy. Chris, do you want to touch on this one or, well, first let's get a motion. Supervisor Morehouse moves. Supervisor Headland seconds.
All right, um, this is a potential tool in your toolkit as you approach budgeting issues. Um, the purpose of this is to um provide you kind of with it, with ahead of time with a um, maybe a a line in a sense or a decision that you've made about the expenditure of some funding. So the first part of the ordinance, um, the sections one through six just, um. They combine a bunch of different things that have happened in the past and, you know, eliminate things that this is duplicative to or um, enhances or kind of make the changes to clean up where we're at. And then um, section seven begins the new piece of a fund balance uh policy. And the first um sections of that with by regard to the background and the definitions. This all comes from an entity called the Government Accounting Standards Board, Gatsby. Um, and so the all of those definitions are pretty standard. If you went out and searched fund balance policies across um the state, actually across the country. You'd find very similar language in all of them because most people just adopt the language from Gatsby. So the true sense of the policy starts um in on the middle of the second page under policy. Um, and essentially this policy would say that so every year at the end of the audit report, there is um, the audit, the auditor will report on our unassigned general fund balance. That's essentially the money that is left over that can be spent on any purpose. If you want to call it, I said, you can call it our savings account. I'd, I would prefer to call it operating reserves. Um, it's the amount of money that we have set aside that which which you could spend on anything um to help us to remain fiscally solid. Um, if you, um, if you recall from previous presentations, right now that fund at the end of twenty one, twenty twenty one was sitting at um a sixty percent ratio of the fund versus our tax or our levy in a particular year. So we have about twenty three thousand, twenty three million dollars of tax levy. And we have about fourteen million dollars of fund balance. So we have enough general fund unassigned balance to cover sixty percent of our levy. The recommended amount from the, from Gatsby is um between twenty five and thirty five percent. So we're at um, getting close to almost to double that. So the policy would essentially um indicate that the county would maintain a balance of at least thirty five percent. Um, and that, and no greater than fifty percent. And then the board would decide where that any surplus over fifty percent could be spent. Um, and typically, and this would prescribe that, it could be transferred to capital improvement funds um to pay for capital equipment or expenditures, could transfer to debt service to prepay um debt that we own. Or it could be used as a beginning cash balance for some um larger one-time expenditure or project. And um each year at the end of the audit, um, that amount would be reported. And then the board would be um in a position of making decisions about the expenditure of that money. Right now, um, because we're at that sixty percent number, if you take that number to fifty percent, it frees up, I'll say, about two and a half million dollars. Any questions about that?
Supervisor Lino.
So that three and a half billion dollars now, is this there just because of ARPA or just our fiscal responsibility?
Um, I think probably a little bit of E, all of the above. So there's a lot of things that are factoring into that and some of the things we've been over, have gone over in the last couple of months. One, we're earning is interest at a somewhat unprecedented rate um because of the current financial climate. So we're at over five percent on most of our money that's setting. Um, secondly, our sales tax revenue has increased. Um, I I believe um last month I showed you, I think it's been about eight hundred thousand dollars over the last three years. Um, so again, that a lot of that's um in response to changes in how internet sales or sales taxes captured and calculated. Um, some of that is money that we didn't have to spend in levy because we had ARPA money or other COVID related money. So there's a variety of things. Um, we did look, I did look after, at executive committee, we looked um prior to twenty twenty one. You know, we always sat at around between that thirty five and forty five percent. So it is a bit on, it's unprecedentedly high at this point in time.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Keter.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I was just curious, what's the difference between a contingency fund as stated in there and the fund balance? I would, I thought they were kind of the same thing or used for the same purposes.
So the fund balance is again, just kind of our operating reserves or savings account, if you were to say. The contingency fund is actually a budgeted line item that the county sets aside every year for emergency causes. Um, in this particular, in um, in our, we usually set aside a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars um in the budget each year for uh, it um, most recently, um, some of it was budgeted towards replacement of a squad. Um, car that was wrecked in an accident, the the insurance paid for the squad, but the outfitting of all the other stuff that goes in a squad needed another form of payment and the contingency fund was tapped for that. So this, the piece of this policy that speaks to contingency fund just memorializes the fact that it's not kind of a willy nilly. Oh, let's just go and ask the contingency fund. This says, um, we would use it for things like emergencies, unanticipated but time sensitive needs, things that that were unanticipated that you couldn't budget for. Anything else? This is the first reading, so um you don't need to take any action. And if you have any questions about it or you'd like um further clarification, please reach out and um be on it. Or I would be glad to have a conversation with you about it.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, um, eleven, consideration reports, resolutions and ordinances coming to the county board from the standing committees. Uh, A, Planning Resource and Development Ordinance, a land division amendment, the second reading. Tom, do you want to touch on this at all? And the motion is on the floor, so.
Yeah, we already, it's the second reading, so it's on the floor. Uh, since Mr. Carlson is here, uh, he mentioned this in his report. Uh he mentioned this in his report, uh that we've been working on this for a couple of years and. Closely working also with uh several local town leaders on it, so. But it's this complicated um ordinance. I'm wondering if with if. I could ask Mr. Carlson to come up, just say a few words of general explanation and then answer any questions that.
Certainly without objection. And then Nick also had a, you know, since Corp Counsel had a thing they wanted to add.
Many of you may not know this, uh supervi- Supervisor Vandermeulen was i- a a teacher at one time. And he read through this and caught a couple of typos uh where I use a plural form. Of the word land and it should have been singular. I thanked him and I made some, I made uh two or three corrections of that in this uh. In the copy that is before you this evening. Um if anybody wants more formality, we can certainly do that. But otherwise, I just wanted to let you know that I made that change.
Thank you, Nick. Go ahead, Tom.
Okay, thank you. So our current land division ordinance was adopted in January of twenty twenty-two. That ordinance was a complete rewrite of the previous ordinance, which had been in place since two thousand and six. So for the past sixteen months or so, staff have discovered what's been working well with the new ordinance, what's not working so well. And what could be added or revised to make the ordinance a much more useful tool for managing land divisions. So what I'm gonna do is um provide a very high-level summary of the amendments that are being proposed. They they are all in your packet. Um so some new definitions have been added such as access easement, archaeological site, private road structure and land with high agricultural value. Revisions have been made to a few of the existing definitions such as environmentally sensitive areas, outlots and wetlands. The requirement for a seventy-five-foot building setback line from all wet wetlands, we're removing that. Um in our amended ordinance, minor modifications have been made to the parcel combination reconfiguration section. Section sixteen point one zero is one of those sections that that Nick had alluded to here. Um. Division by, well, actually, it's titled right now, Division by Platt of High Value Agricultural Land. And we've decided to retitle it. We're using the same words, just put placing them in a different order. So I'll read it again, Division by Platt of High Value Agricultural Land. We're gonna change that to vision to Division by Platt. Of land with high agricultural value. Same words, different order, gives it a slightly different meaning, which we're satisfied with. Um the certified survey map preliminary plat and final plat sections have been revised by incorporating additional standards and removing others such as. Uh we have a requirement to show the seventy-five-foot offset line from the ordinary high watermark of all navigable streams and lakes. We've added that in. Um the required shoreline zoning note that we currently have in the ordinance, we've made some revisions to that. The requirement to show all areas with slopes of twenty percent or greater on certified survey maps has been removed. The requirement for a note whenever any part of a proposed land division contains wetlands or hydroic soils has been added. Uh owner certificate, we have verbiage in there, we've revised that. Um so it's a little more. We've provided some clarif- or clarity in that language. The requirement for having a wetland delineation performed as part of a preliminary plat and submittal process when mapped wetlands or hydroic soils are present on a site. We've added that. We've added a provision requiring the location identity of all environmentally sensitive areas to be shown on all preliminary plats. We have a cer- surface drainage and erosion control section. There's verbiage in that section that encourages a subdivider to request assistance and consultation from the Dunn County. Land of Water Conservation Division with respect to managing surface water. Drainage and minimizing soil erosion, we've removed that provision. Um that division does not assist with that, so we've removed that. Uh the street and road section has been greatly revised, which now provides a much better distinction between public and private roads and access easements. We've also provided better clarity on how many lots can be served by an a- access easement with respect to lots existing prior to the adoption date of the ordinance. That's always been a tricky thing, so we've we've buttoned that section up, so to speak, provide a better clarity. In addition, uh with respect to per- proposed permanent dead-end roads. We've added a provision allowing for di- different types of turnarounds other than a traditional cul-de-sac. And that was. I'm at the recommendation of some of our our town officials. So. The lot and outlot section has been revised to be in better alignment with our county zoning ordinance with respect to minimum lot size. Uh we rem- probably the biggest change in my mind is we've removed the thirty thousand square uh foot contiguous buildable area requirement on all newly created lots. It's been causing some some heartburn and problems. Uh so the adequacy of net buildable area going forward will be verified and approved by department staff. Um on each individual site. We're not tying, no longer tying it to a a certain square footage, wh- which we found was problematic. Additionally, all newly proposed outlots will require frontage on a public or private road or access easement unless the outlawed is intended to be conveyed to an adjoining landowner. Amendments to our variance section allows an applicant now to combine multiple variance requests on the same application. We were finding that was. Was the case in some instances. We didn't have a provision for that. Additionally, we've added verbiage um allowing. An approved variance to attach to the property as a permanent right for the current and all subsequent owners. And lastly, we made one minor modification to the land division fee fee schedule, excuse me, allowing variance requests to be charged. Based on a tiered structure. So if they wanna combine them. And as Tom had mentioned, throughout the process of drafting, reviewing the amendments with the PRD committee. Um some of our town officials um routinely showed up at those meetings. We also had input, I did personally from local land surveyors that were using the ordinance. Um so we've tried to incorporate um that input and recommendations into the amendments that you have before you tonight. So this concludes my summary. I'm confident that the amendments we are proposing will greatly improve our existing ordinance, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Larry Bjork, there we go.
Got it. Uh Tom, uh Mr. Carlson, um. Give you just a hypothetical. I've got ten acres along County Trunk E. Uh it is bordered by uh Iron Creek to the west, County Trunk E. Uh to the east. With the changes that you have made. To solve the housing shortage in Dunn County, would I be able to? Uh for put more houses on that ten acres with the new ordinance or less?
So if I understand where you're at, just north of the law office, that you would be in the town of Springbrook.
Right.
Which is an unzoned town.
Yep.
So there is no dent, there is no zoning. Um you would potentially be subject to shoreline zoning if you're within three hundred feet of that stream. Um. So from the land division side of things, if that's all you own, you had a ten-acre parcel, that would be your contiguous tract. You could do four splits on that. Every five years, you could create four parcels, minimum lot size would be one acre. You'd have to have a minimum of thirty-three feet of frontage on County Trunk Highway E, and assuming you could get driveway permits for all your lots. Take ten divided by, well, it's one acre excluding road right-of-way, so. I'm not sure what the road right-of-way is through there, and maybe thirty-three, maybe more than that. I know there.
More than they need.
They've done some work along there, purchased additional, but in theory, you could do four lots on that track every ten years.
So the new ordinance doesn't change that?
Nope, it doesn't change that. And I wanna clarify, you could do four lots by certified survey map every five years. If you wanna do more than that, you could do it by plat. That's always an option. But you still have to maintain a one-acre minimum lot size. And that's irrespective of what the town of Springbrook would require. I don't know what they have for a minimum lot size. If they have something more restrictive, then you'd have to comply with that.
Right. I'm all into economic redevelopment, but not a long E. Thank you.
Any further questions? Alright, any any others speaking to the resolution? You're off the hook, Tom. Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Uh Jim, was that a an in favor or an opposed?
I was, that was an I in favor.
Alright, thank you. Uh eleven A two ordinance rezone Town of Sherman. Uh basement, uh Supervisor Quinn, did you want to? Well, first I need a motion. Uh Supervisor Quinn moves Supervisor Patrick Presland seconds. Now, speaking to the motion, Supervisor Quinn.
Straightforward rezone request in Town of Sherman. Uh the the, we had a public hearing on it. Uh no one, uh the the neighbors were notified. The uh town has approved the rezone, which will basically, I think is, I think this will allow. Uh the intention is to allow uh an additional uh home to, family home to be built on. Uh split the property into two parcels and build an adjacent family home. Uh so it, the committee uh after the hearing uh approved the rezone request and is bringing it to the board for approval tonight.
Thank you, Supervisor Quinn. Any speaking to the resolution? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh. Eleven A three ordinance amending zoning ordinance, limited commercial district. First reading, I will need a motion and a second. Supervisor Quinn and Supervisor Keneer. Uh speaking to the motion, Supervisor Quinn.
Uh just briefly, since this is the first uh first reading, this is a uh. A a effort to uh to amend our ordinance uh that we rediscovered, the committee discovered that we had. Uh in inadvertently included um the uh development of. Multi-family residential units in the commercial zoning ordinance when we adopted it, we revised it and adopted it back in two thousand and seventeen. This has caused some problems with regard to uh uh matching it with town comprehensive plans. And some of the land use intentions that people had, so we went back in and uh suggesting this. This change in order to clarify that um that that is. That is not the intention of the ordinance.
Thank you, Supervisor Quinn. And as mentioned, this is a first reading, so we will now move on. Eleven B Judiciary Law Resolution Designating Public Safety Answering Point for Dunn County. I need a motion. Supervisor Calabrese seconding Supervisor Patrick Presland. Uh Supervisor Calabrese is speaking to the motion. Oh, sorry, Sean Presland. Did I get that wrong before too? My apologies.
There it is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um. The county emergency services is moving to next generation nine-one-one, which is a, as I understand it, enhanced uh emergency services. Uh system. Uh and state statute says that only one entity in a county can host and provide that service. And so this resolution states that Dunn County will be the on- only entity that provides that service.
That seems pretty straightforward. Any others speaking to the resolution questions? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Eleven C one facilities, resolution transferring ownership of Myron Park to the town of Sand Creek. Sand Creek, um. I need a motion in a second. Supervisor Rogers. Supervisor Lino, I think, was 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 first off the off the gun there. Uh speaking to the resolution, Supervisor Rogers.
So the the park was donated back in nineteen sixty-nine to the town of Sand Creek. And then a few years later, I think it was seventy-three, it was uh transferred to the county. From the most recent years now, since like oh seven or maybe even before. The town of Sand Creek has been maintaining it and operating it for all of the, for everything. The county hasn't really had to do much at all. They even raised funds and put in a new well here just recently. Um they'd like to do more work and they brought it to us that they would like to have the ownership transferred back. Our committee didn't find any reason that we should stand in the way of this. Um it will still be operated as a park the. And used as it is now with the same stipulations that were in the, in the agreement when it was donated to us. Um. It was a nice write-up in there, so I guess pretty clear from our perspective.
Thank you, Supervisor Rogers. Uh any speaking to the motion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We already covered eleven C two, which brings us to our announcements. Uh county board budget workshop will be Wednesday, August thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, starting at five thirty P M. Our next regular county board meeting will be Wednesday, September twentieth, twenty twenty-three at seven P M. Uh one thing I do wanna note is uh we've been putting together a ser- a survey for the supervisors. Uh we'd like to be able, after the next election, to bring on new people into new committees a little bit more easily. So you'll be seeing that. And it'll be asking you, you know, what 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 things that you needed to, we would have liked to have learned as you came onto your committee. Just generally trying to get a a better grasp and more institutional memory of everything that's happening with the committees. So you should be seeing that sometime in the next month or two from from me and from H R. I have one. And Andrew?
We received a thank you note. It says, Dear Dunn County Administration and County Board Members, thank you for your kindness. Thank you so much for the chamber dollars. I enjoyed my twenty-five years working with such great, wonderful people, but retirement is great. From Jeannie Miller. Uh also, there's a quick announcement. Um I do believe that today is the anniversary of the twenty-ninth birthday of the county manager. So that's quite exciting.
Happy birthday. Um and. And Corp Counsel has reminded me to 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 note that, in fact, the county fair is starting here very, very shortly, and you should all get out and get to that today. And with that. Oh, Supervisor Larry Bjork.
County Fair is uh already in swing. Uh the rides opened up this afternoon at three o'clock, I believe it was. And uh the hockey building is uh packed with exhibits uh from tall corn. To some fantastic uh photography done by four-H members and. Uh open class senior citizens. Uh uh some of the people from the healthcare center were down there. Checking on some of the uh items that had been entered there in open class for the residents. Sheriff's Department has a really nice um uh display and a lot of interaction with the public. Uh Health Done Right is there. Uh. U W extension is uh providing a lot of information. And uh. You would think it was hot out there, but it's. Really hot. But uh I I've been told that when the stock cars get going and the tractors rev up, you hardly even notice the heat. So that's coming up and uh one big, big item. I as the memories do a a a uh Sunday New and Gospel and then an afternoon pro- afternoon program. And Rich Schrader, a Dunn County resident, is on the stage there tonight, so. Cows, kids, senior citizens, everybody. Uh it's 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 been a real nice get-together. Five hundred, five hundred entries in the open class alone, you know, uh other than four-H kids. And the meat animal auction is Saturday night, I believe. And if you're really in for a hoot. Be there Thursday afternoon, there's a pedal tractor pull. And I think we got just about all the grandpas and grandmas in Dunn County to come and watch these kids. Get on a pedal tractor and wheel her down uh the middle of the hockey rink. So I mean, just a lot of just fun stuff and uh plenty of places to sit down and get a. Uh. Bottle of water and uh really welcome everybody to come.
Thank you, Supervisor Bjork. And it was, it was, it was still fairly lightly attended when I came through on my way to this meeting. So I'm sure they'd be happy to to get the crowd getting a little bit bigger and rowdier.
Yep.
And with that, we are adjourned.